All right, so if we can all stand, call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as far off.
And so we are trying to transition from an acting chair to a chair and a vice chair. And so do we have any nominations for chair?
I nominate Sarah Vogel.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion, comment? Yes?
I fully support Sarah being chair. My only concern is that a few of the meetings, you weren't able to make it on time. So if that's going to be a problem, then maybe we can push the meeting a little later, like 6:30. Well, just a thought.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem. Okay.
Do we have any other nominations for chair? Hearing none, Sarah, would you be willing to be said chair?
Yes, I will.
Okay. All in favor of Sarah Vogel as chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and my job is done. Sarah, there you go. You're up.
All right, I would like to take nominations for the vice chair. And I'll make a motion.
Yes. I'd like to nominate, yeah, and I'm torn. I would like to nominate Alyssa Bascom, actually.
All right, and I am going to nominate Kevin Keatt.
I think you have to do one nomination.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second, okay.
So then you can see if there's other nominations and then I think.
Usually you vote first.
Yeah, you have to take an emotion.
Yeah.
On the floor, and then you open up discussion.
For nominations for position, you would vote first.
Yeah, that's the rules of order. Then to a million school board meetings.
I don't think we've ever done it in the past like that because then you don't know if you're going to have a.
Right, if you're.
I mean, can do it anyway we want.
If we want a clarification, we can get it.
Well, I.
Normally you would create a slate and then you'd be able to vote for the slate, but.
Right.
Typically, in other places that I've been there, if there's more than one person, otherwise you won't know that there's more than one person prior to voting on the first.
So did we not get information on the order of operations for nomination and voting? For positions?
You mean Robert's rules regarding that?
Or however we bring the board.
I think you would use whatever your standard practice would be. Sometimes it's formal Robert's rules, sometimes it's another way, but I think what my opinion is you'd want to do what's best for the group. And so you guys can take that as you would like.
So the last time we voted, when I first joined the board, and we nominated, that's how we did it.
Are we on some discussion phase?
Yes.
Okay. I, well, for anyone but Sarah, the acting chair at the time, had expressed an interest that she wanted Kevin Keatt to be her vice chair. And I would support the school board chair's recommendation.
Question?
I know.
So I wasn't at your meeting where you discussed all of that.
Correct.
Which was a workshop. And so my question is Kevin's been on the board how long?
Since he.
Okay, so you were just barely nominated to the board. Have you been on other boards, Kevin?
Other boards. I've been on the primary, the fact of Senate, and our college, I've been chair of the curriculum committee down at our college.
Okay, so college level boards. Okay. All right, thank you.
So in doing a quick, very quick and brief, obviously very brief because it's while you guys have been talking, I haven't even read through what some of these say, but there, it's obvious that we should make sure that our, that our procedures or policies go into this and solve this problem in the future. Because we should have it very clear in terms of it. I mean, to me, it would make sense that the nominations would be, whenever I do nomination, I mean, I've run, run a lot of for each means, and every year we do a nomination of officers and we nominate the slate, and then we decide who's going to be on the, in the, in the, in the positions. It doesn't, that is, that's kind of the procedure that we always use, and it's the procedure for the, at the club level, at the love, at each of the different levels going up. So it's very confusing to me when we, when we have to go through and do a decision when we don't know who all are our possibility.
So you have the option of withdrawing this motion and we can start over. That's an option. Would you like to do that with a slate of nominees?
Sure, if it makes everybody more comfortable. I don't think it's the proper way to do it, but sure, I'm fine with it.
Well, you'd have to withdraw the second.
Yeah, you just withdraw, yeah, you withdraw the motion. So we have a motion on the floor right now.
I didn't.
No, it was Joe. We withdraw your second.
Okay.
Okay.
Just move along, sure.
So what I would like to do is to, is to have nominations for a slate of, you know, if there are people who, if there are people who, there's, if there are people who we would like to have discussion on having the position of vice chair.
All right.
I nominate Kevin Keatt. Or Kevin.
Sorry. I think I did it last meeting, too. I apologize.
Do we want, do we want a discussion?
I'll nominate Alyssa Bascom to add to the list.
Is there anyone else who's interested in being the vice chair?
No, just a conversation. So when, so tell me if you've done it this way before, Superintendent Minihan, how do you, how do you do the voting order?
Actually, it depends on how you've done it, right? So the slate, normally you would vote by ballot or whatever, on whatever the slate would be. In terms of this, the superintendent doesn't do the voting, right? So typically, there's.
Just asking your opinion.
Yeah, so typically, there's been one candidate for each role. Otherwise, what they've done, so like when you're talking about a new board member, you know, if you had three people who were interested, you'd bring them in, they'd talk to the board, and then the board would vote on them. I just, yeah, so, yeah, you got it. But for this, it's a little different, right? You know, I mean, you're in an unexpected position where the vice chair has just been nominated as chair. And so I think there's this balancing act that you want to do between expediency of following whatever process you mean, want to follow, and getting kind of the will of the people. And I mean, no one has even asked either of the individuals if they're even interested. I mean, that's sort of a.
I think they did, probably at the last meeting.
Oh, no, we didn't really, no, we weren't, it was, it was a, it was an extremely informal discussion. It was not, not a formal discussion at all.
No, so I don't.
We weren't, okay.
So I don't know if they're.
This is not the first time we've had more than one candidate on the floor. And Jamie's process that she was recommending is the process that this board has followed in the past. So I just put another option out there that if it were not what everybody wanted to do, you have the option to withdraw. So I think we just.
So what, what my suggestion would be, since we have two people on right now out there as, as nominations, nominations, that we first we say, would both of you like, are both of you interested in the position? Okay.
I appreciate the nomination, but I do believe that the right thing to do would be to defer.
Okay. All right, so that leaves us with one person. So. Can we vote? Do we have any discussion?
It leads us with one person, but there's two motions on the table.
I'm not even sure what the motion is.
No, the, we had a motion.
Somebody nominated Alyssa, somebody nominated Kevin.
Exactly.
And they were both seated, I believe.
Okay.
No. No.
We withdrew the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So we need a second for both of.
Or one.
Or a second for, for one, for a second for, for Kevin's nomination.
Shelley did that.
No, no, I nominated him. I will second Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, now is there discussion for that? No, hearing none, so I will move it to a vote. All in favor of Kevin Keatt being our vice chair. Aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Could you not change positions again? This is, no, all of you, all of you, this is very confusing during this situation. Okay. Well, you got through that.
All right. So approval of minutes. So do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes from Monday, June 20th, the public session?
I make a motion to approve Monday, 20th, 22, 2022 public session. Can I just do the August 30, 31st to 13th?
Sure, need discussion.
Yeah. I'll just keep it to June 20.
Okay.
Second.
All right, is there discussion? There's a public session? Yes.
There's one part of, of June 20th, and, and it's okay, it's just the section where it talks about our discussion about funding and being able to use fund balance. It doesn't quote me correctly, but because we're taped to now, I'm not going to have it rewritten. But I would encourage anybody if they had questions about that section to watch the video.
Thank you. All right, so you didn't feel like it was enough to have to be, to go into what specifically it was?
It was pretty general. It's just, it was very general, and, and there was a few other things that we had discussed. So I would just encourage people if they had any questions about it.
Okay.
To go watch it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, and how about the approval of the minutes from Saturday, August 13th? We need to. So.
I had a, right, first and second motion on the floor.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I have to abstain because I left in the middle. Yes, I did, says so right there.
Joe left.
I left, I had a previous engagement and then they threw this meeting on the schedule.
All right, so then, do I have a motion for accepting Saturday, August 13th, the word workshop minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the workshop meetings from August 13th.
Right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
I abstain.
All right. All right, next we have recognition of visitors and public input. And we're going to have a bit of discussion regarding the SB 410, which requires that the board, including a state board, provide a public comment period of no less than 30 minutes for to set parameters and process. So Alyssa, you had some questions about this, do you want to?
I didn't have any questions in particular, but I just wanted it to get in the public record that we have discussed it. And so they, that it's very clear that we're aware that we will be offering by law the 30 minutes and that the community knows that they can come to our meetings and be part of it.
Right. And just for the record, we have made sure that there's always public, you know, recognition of visitors and public input has always been on our, has always been on our, been a piece of our, of our agenda. And we do, we do put a statement that we limit people to three minutes. And the reason for that is not that we're limiting the whole thing to three minutes, it's that we don't want to, each person doesn't get 30 minutes. It's, there, I think that the, the, the idea of the bill is that, that they're allowing 30 minutes, but saying that it's not like that the public is going to take over the meeting and go on for, you know, have the meeting go into the three hours of the night. Because I've been at those meetings, too. So.
So, just for clarification, we haven't always allowed public comment because I've been the public and have not been able to make comments. So I just want to be careful when we say always.
Oh, okay.
There have been plenty of meetings where the chair would say, I'm not allowing public comments. And then there have been many conversations with many citizens that if a public member had a question, they would have to send it directly to the board, and then the board has the option of discussing it in public. So I just don't want us to get barraged with emails from people who said, you know, not always allowed public.
Okay, okay, okay. I, I stand corrected.
I don't mean it badly.
No, 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 that's fine. Yeah, absolutely.
I have a point of order that I think maybe needs to be checked by the lawyers, but does this mean that every meeting, every public meeting we have, we put 30 minutes aside for this, even if nobody says anything during those 30 minutes?
It's up to 30 minutes.
It's up to 30 minutes? So because, because the way I read it, it can go beyond 30 minutes if there's a lot of discussion.
Well, it has to be at least. But it has to be at least 30 minutes.
Right, so that's, that's my question. If it has to be at least 30 minutes, that means we wait 30 minutes?
No, 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 no. We have, we have 30 minutes allotted that are there, but if there's no, if, if the discussion is done before the 30 minutes is up, then we, we can move on. Right. It's kind of like, you know, when, when I had the times allotted for the, at the workshop?
Yeah.
And then we got done with, we, we finished, we finished, we would move on. Or if there was one spot where we were continuing to talk and we, and you said that the time is up for this section?
Yeah.
And we said, okay, let's go on, let's, let's allow another 15 minutes, you know?
No, I totally understand that. I'm just like, are we going to be in violation of state law if we don't allow the full 30 minutes, even if it's just listening to crickets?
Yeah, I don't think that this, that they, that that's what they're looking for us to do is to, is to sit and waste all of our time by sitting and twiddling our thumbs waiting for 30 minutes to be.
There was no requirement in the law prior to this going into effect to allow public comment. Now we are required to allow public comment. So have a space on the agenda for public input.
Yeah.
And we still encourage people if they want to be put on the agenda to contact the board clerk until officially put them on the agenda to speak. It's not a requirement that there's, right, but it's encouraged. So just efficiency of the meeting.
Shelley, what?
Um, it does say board to set parameters and process, so should we work out how we're going to do that?
I think that that probably.
We'll have to.
Wouldn't make sense to go into the policy. Yeah.
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 Yeah. Oh, so that was it.
So would we add that possibly to the, one of our workshops?
The policy committee will look at the, the recommended policy, NHSBA is, it'll come out in their fall update as to what the recommendations are for the policy. And the policy committee will review it, bring it back to the board.
We, we do have two public people here. Do you guys, would you like to address the board? Or are you just?
So to introduce her, yes.
Jennifer Marquez, and I'm on the budget committee. Great. Resident of. So we decided that's approved for the budget committee, that we would like to attend some board meetings. Oh, thank you. Great.
I'm Steve Lassio, and for transparency, I'm selected as well as people on the budget committee representing at large.
And Jennifer's also the vice chair of the budget committee.
Yes.
I forgot.
Okay.
All right, was there any more discussion around the public input that we wanted to have? Yes.
Until we've met in the policy committee and then brought it here and approved what our new policy will be on that, would it be prudent of, of the board to have it listed, but also then to ask the question at the end to make sure that we reach every member of the public who wanted to speak?
But yeah.
One of the parameters the, the board can set, and it's one that you probably want to think about, is whether or not you want to allow people to call, you know, zoom in and ask questions. When they're here, I think a lot of boards would just, you know, say, yeah, anyone else have anything else they want to say? I think the other, you do not have to. I think the other thing I was trying to remember was the date of when it comes into effect.
Immediately.
That was, I thought it was 60 days, no?
No.
Yeah, immediately on action of the government. Okay. I don't think you have to, but.
So they did, they did make mention as far as online, it is not, there is no requirement to allow people to speak via Zoom, but.
Because of the labor it takes in order to manage something like that. That's all.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that, that asking for the, for the extra effort of coming in to do the, to do a public comment would, would be prudent. And so.
I agree, but I just, I, I personally believe asking that there was somebody here, just making sure to voice it in public that the public is welcome to speak at any time, or just to ask for their input at the end of the meeting, to make sure they've been heard. And also to note that there may be people on Zoom who aren't comfortable being in person for one reason or another. Being a little bit liberal with that requirement, I think would be good for us.
We can discuss that policy.
I think that would be the first one that we deal with.
I think that would be, yeah, definitely something to talk about because just, you have to set very definite parameters around that, on how you would determine what that would be.
I could use some very specific things that I would.
Great.
Yeah, I would just like to add for the policy committee not to forget that this may not be the last pandemic we ever see. Someday, we all may be on Zoom, so we need a way to communicate.
Right. All right. I'm going to move us forward then. Reports of administrators, the superintendent's report.
Sure, I'll be kind of brief with it because you all received it. And the highlights that I just put in is I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that this is my, what I thought were the important rules and laws that had been passed that would affect us. And even within that thing, the ones that I would probably highlight for the general public has to do with House Bill 1263, which provides for prescribed studies and health, PE and wellness, as well as personal finance literacy. So those are things that we have, but we'll have to make sure that they meet the new prescriptions, so to speak. House Bill 1661 has a really good purpose, but it's a bear of a bill. It requires sending districts and CTE centers to enter into an agreement to include scheduling, access, transportation, and credits for CTE students. Basically, you're supposed to try to align your calendars so that you have no more than 10 days that don't align. That gets involved with collective bargaining agreements and all sorts of other things. So it's challenging, but that's the law, and we'll work, we'll continue to work on that.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, does this pertain to Vermont also?
No. Well, I mean, it would tell us to do it, but it depends on, I don't think.
I don't think.
New Hampshire's in force, Vermont.
Same problem.
Yeah.
Right. So, so it does in that if you're sending, right, if we're sending children to.
They can't send anybody here as far as I know.
Then we try to align as much as you can. The challenge here is that we're sending children to two different centers, one in Vermont, one in New Hampshire. And one of, at least one of the breaks is different, one aligned.
Right, we always, we always end up with one of the, with one of the breaks not, not working. So, and, and we work, we work out how we're going to do that, so that the students can still go. They, they can still go over. And sometimes they, they either work out transportation, or they, they work out transportation, you know, that they can, they're still welcome to go, even when, when we don't have.
I know that currently, they, you can't go the other way, the Springfield kids can't come here.
Right.
But maybe that'll change something.
Question. So do we, do we provide transportation while we're on break? Do you know? Does anybody?
I can speak to that now. I know in the past.
We had.
We have offered.
Right, okay, we did in the past. So I'm assuming we, we do now and will in the future.
I mean, the fact that kids are going to go.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you.
They're giving up a break.
If you poll them and they want to go, I think we should make available.
I mean, yeah, literally, they, they want to go, so.
The SB 410 is an important bill, but we've already talked about that. And then the last one that I speak to is HB 1513, which I think Xander mentioned the other day, but is important. And that changes the age definition of a child with a disability to include 3 to 21 inclusive, which means to the end of their 21st birthday. And it's having some interesting ripple effects from my conversation with Xander in terms of a lot of these programs where we may have had kids go, they don't necessarily have space anymore because they're keeping students for an additional year. So it's just an important one to kind of keep in the back of our mind to see what the ripple effects are. I gave a couple of highlights with grants and how we were spending some of the money involving smart technology, what Lynn Phillips refers to as POLIs, which I call smart technology, but basically that type of thing over there. Some playground equipment and picnic tables for the schools using some of our caretaker COVID money for outside sort of learning and instruction and facilitating that. And then, as I mentioned previously, we have the 33 school safety grants out there that we're supposed to hear about. I think it said end of August, beginning of September, if I remember correctly. And we'll see how well we do. And the other thing I want to mention in terms of school safety, and I don't know if Tom, being here his first day, has already come across this, this SRO, where you need to enter into a memorandum of understanding, not we, the town of Langdon does with the state police, as we've done previously. I think we also sign off on that. And that's, I think, what we've done for the last couple of years, where they provide coverage as they can. It's not.
Kind of like awkward.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's the same people, actually. So, yeah, it's similar. So there's that, you have a technology report that Lynn gave to me. Basically, they're doing what they do and, you know, keeping our equipment ready for the kids, ready for the staff, which is coming up quickly. The personnel that will come up, the consent for personnel will come up later, but I gave you a snapshot and time of all the positions that we are still trying to fill. Since that time, I think we filled probably five or six additional, but we still have some. We're almost at the point where some of the teaching positions specifically, we're making modifications to make it work. I mean, we haven't been able to find a chemistry teacher since we posted. If we find one, phenomenal, but I don't really see one saying like, you know, I've been hanging out, waiting, and now, now's the time. So we'll do the best we can with that.
All right, see you then. I'm writing questions.
Oh, perfect, okay. And then I put down the stipends once. And then the, so we have probably now 42 new staff joining us on Thursday. That's all staff. If it makes you feel any better, Bedford still has 75 openings. So, you know, they're bringing in more staff than that. We, I mentioned before, I think it was at the workshop that we're trying something. We, I mentioned before, I think it was at the workshop that we're trying something two or three times this year called Coming to the Mountain, where we try to bring all the kids and all the towns and families together to the high school for an event. The first one coming up is going to be a movie night. We're gonna see if the.
What night is that?
Uh, that's in October something we came up with.
They talked about October fifteenth.
October fifteenth, if that's doable, but it's not set in stone yet.
Because it depends on Shelley.
Because.
Well, that's why I was like, when, when are we doing that?
Shelley and the Charlestown rec have been kind enough to donate the actual projection in audio devices and equipment. We still need to pick the movie, but we're gonna have, Mr. Rawning is gonna reach out to some of the high school groups. We figured they were the most sort of capable of pulling something together fairly quickly. And we're hoping that, so we'll have popcorn and water for free for all the kids and families. But we're hoping that these groups can come and offer different types of concessions and things with fifty percent of the money going to the group and fifty percent going to the Fall Mountain Food Show. So we have that coming up. One of the things that I wrote to the staff for our beginning of the year, the first day I drove in, I get lost in thought frequently and I was thinking of FMRSD, and I thought, well, you know what? Friendships make really strong districts. And if we can all remember that, parents, kids, school board members, superintendents going into it, bet you we're gonna have a great year coming out of COVID. So whatever we can do in that regard would be awesome. COVID, I sent out new guidance to the community today, to the student, staff, families, I think it went. When I say I did, Misty did it, so I don't know exactly where it went, but I wrote it. That's good. We do have some interesting situations sometimes that affect the general guidance. But we work very closely with the people involved to make sure that we're meeting their needs medically, health-wise, those types of things, while also meeting, you know, trying to be as flexible as we can with all of our families. So that went out today. Our intention is to provide monthly updates on COVID numbers, not weekly, not daily. We're moving to monthly. And that is the superintendent's report, except to answer Jamie's question and anyone else's. They would too, but you told me you were writing yours down. It's all good.
I'm trying not to interrupt. I'm working on that part of my.
Awesome.
A lot of strong points. So on the, and this may be for Xander because you weren't here, on the HB fifteen thirteen, did we know the change was coming early enough to budget accordingly for any, any students that, that triggers budgetary implications for the district?
So, no.
Okay.
But I did hear, and we all heard the rumors it was coming, but it wasn't in time for budget season. The budget had already been determined to pass at that point.
I said, and.
And.
The, the state is providing, is providing some money, so.
Are they gonna help reimburse?
So it's a little more complicated than that.
I got the email too, and it didn't sound that good.
So how it works on the state level is you need to expend all of your grant funds first, so you have to expend all our IDA funds. And do have IDA funds allocated. We have not expended all those funds. I always keep some of those funds in reserve just in case we have something that comes up where you're a student that may come in that needs an assistive device or other things. So they want you to expand that. We also have to look at our budget and see if there's any other grant funding we would have to do this. And then how it works is basically you would expend the funds and then they would repay the funds above and beyond the cost of what they consider catastrophic aid or what they call spending. There's a certain dollar amount, and above that dollar amount, we get reimbursed from the state a year later. So that happens now as we work, so. And for us right now, we're okay. We don't have any students at this point in time that's going to affect us. And this only is in effect for one year. The state's only gonna reimburse for this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, they will not reimburse because they, they said that you should plan your budget for this.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you. And then my, my only other question was about the shorting, the shortages, the staffing shortages. Just asking, just asking the question because it's thinking out of the box, and I'm sure you're already doing it. But just for the benefit of the public, have we or can we reach out to other high schools to allow students to attend any necessary classes they need there? Or, and or are we going to provide students with the access to the online class content via V-Lax?
I would say the first one, maybe. Much harder to do. We don't have a lot of buses either.
And the other, the other, the other schools are having the same.
They're in the same, but Keen's been doing two years, I think, for chemistry, I heard.
Yeah.
The, the second one, V-Lax, sure, absolutely. One thing that we might, or when I say we, I mean you, I want to discuss as a board are possible avenues to maybe entice people to come. And, you know, like we were chatting today, there are people that would love to come, or so they say, but they have childcare issues. And so there aren't a lot of childcare facilities around here. And so they can't come because where they currently work, they have that, even though they may want to come here because it's closer. So those are just things to possibly consider going forward. For like young kids, you know, different employers will offer it. Schools generally don't.
So. Any other questions? For, okay, so next we have building and department administrators report, so.
Yeah, if it's okay, we were gonna have them each report out because, I mean, they're the people in the buildings. It's gonna be very brief today because they just talk to you. But why don't we just go down the line if that's okay?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Justin Cassino from the Wapo attendance area. So we had summer school over the summer. We've been very busy. We had over twenty students participate in that, and it was a very successful program. It's, you know, we're done academics, social, emotional stuff, but also let's go to the town pool and everything as well. So that was great. We've talked about some of the big projects that we're doing. Starting this week, our pavilion at the Wapo Primary School is gonna be starting to be put up. I want to thank Benson Wood. They, they're the ones that are doing the work. They donate a lot of their time and everything for it. They were supposed to start last week, but they're having trouble getting their hands on some materials, so it got delayed an extra another week. We sanded, painted and resurfaced the, the gym at Wapo Elementary School. New England sports floors came into that, and it looks amazing. It's a bright new look as soon as you walk into the gym, which is great. And then I want to thank Mary for helping me with the SR funds, with the grants and everything like that, working on getting playground equipment for the schools and everything, especially at North Wapo School where we were had that being in the plan for the next school year, but it's just, it's, we had to take this opportunity to, to work on it now because some of the structure's really becoming unsafe. So we took care of that. And then we've had Homeland Security coming throughout this month as well. We've had two visits so far. Our last visit at North Wapo School is on Wednesday. Got great feedback. We're working on, when we get the final report, we'll work on the recommendations and everything, but including the fire department, police department, the teachers, secretaries has been great because it's just information. There's things that we didn't even think about that they brought up with questioning and stuff, so that's been very helpful. And then I met with the NHDI program, our Wapo BTG always sponsors a week-long event at the end of the school year for our pre-K to fifth grade students to do a week-long program and then a big performance on Friday night. And they actually reached out to us to see if we'd be interested in doing a fifth through eighth grade year-long one where they come into our school once a week and do a forty-five-minute class and everything with our students that are interested. And we're really hoping that we're gonna be able to do that because what we're really pushing for this year is to provide opportunities for students during the school day to do events because we always have, we offer things after school, and not every student can do that. So we really think this would be a great opportunity for them to work on a project all year, and then they get to go to King State College to perform at the Redford Art Center on the stage during more of the weekend. So it's a huge event and with all the local schools. And then we've been just preparing for the start of school, getting our buildings ready. Custodians have been doing a great job of cleaning up and, you know, making it look brand new in every single one of the schools and then facilities done an amazing job putting all the equipment away. I, or putting together, sorry. And then IT, moving boards, setting up some of the technology in all of our classrooms and getting our new staff prepared and everything as well. And we're excited for our students and families to begin next week.
So Xander, I'm Special Education Director, and I'll be kind of brief because I gave you kind of overview last time, but the same thing, we're just getting prepared. At this point in the year is when we start having some meetings with families, students who are coming in with IUPs being prepared. Right now, we're reaching out to the charter schools or out of district placements, having those conversations. We're actually in pretty good standing right here in our district with our relationships with charter schools and our relationships with our district placements. So right now, we're good to go, which is exciting. A lot of districts aren't in the same position as up, so that's really nice. The principal's done a phenomenal job, continue, are out there interviewing and getting paraprofessionals. That's our greatest area of need. That's my greatest area of concern because those paraprofessionals are tied directly to our students with IUPs. So we're doing a great job, and every day they tell me they try to get somebody new, and it's exciting. So I'm appreciative of that. But overall, my staff's starting to trickle in. It's exciting time. I'm excited to see students, excited to work with the families. Yeah, just happy that your school year is coming. It's hard to believe, to be honest.
So I'm Tom Rawning. I am the high school principal. Today is my first day back with regards to that. Students have already been here with regard to sports in full swing with regard to that. Today, we ended up having some scrimmages and full contests and things actually start next week. Again, you know, and the facilities crew and everything that they've done. The building looks really good, and they continue to do last-minute touch-ups. We're gonna actually touch up the front entrance, do the lines down the road and really screw things up last minute detail before it gets here. I just want to really thank Brad for everything that he has done. Came on board July first, and obviously he got thrown a big curveball after he got here. So everything that he's done to help the school and move forward, I mean, he definitely deserves some praise for that. With regard to classes, obviously, the safety and well-being of all of our students is, is on the forefront. So with regard to that, we still have five teaching positions unfilled. We continue to look, we continue to pursue. We got an application, I think it was yesterday, that we're gonna end up looking at. But in the meantime, in the best interest of students, we were not able to stop and just wait. Obviously, school starts next week. So we have collapsed thirteen courses temporarily to be able to do that. That affected fifty-one percent of our student population.
Wow.
With regard to that, nine teachers actually have, are giving up their planning block to take over classes so that instead of teaching the three classes during the day, they're gonna be teaching four. Just looking at that in the best interest of students and making sure that we can provide courses and instruction from a certified teacher. Obviously, that's what we need to do. So that's where we're moving forward. So what I ended up saying, you know, fifty-one percent of the student population, three hundred and fifty of the students have had their schedule changed in the last couple of weeks. So that's seventy-one, seventy-one percent, I think, of the student population. So it's an awful lot of changes.
Busy.
The guidance department, I mean, when you look at things that they have done.
Yeah.
With regard to, you know, talking with teachers, changing schedules, making sure that they have everything in your best interests. If they still want to think to move forward, we've offered V-Lax classes. So there's many different things that we've done to be able to enable everything possible for the students to be able to have full schedules and move forward. So guidance department has done fantastic. So currently, the ones that we're still looking at that are not complete are two computer classes, nine-week computer classes, and we're still looking to deal with the gradient geometry class for them to come up here. Those are the ones that we still haven't figured out yet.
And the computer classes are required for graduation, correct? Yeah.
We have Brad introduce himself. Some people didn't.
Oh, yeah. Brad.
You haven't met me. I'm Brad Venice. I'm the assistant principal, and I started July first.
Where'd you come from?
I'm from Hinsdale. I was chemistry teacher, but I'm not.
I heard chemistry, and I'm like, well, there it is. We have to when we have to do it, don't we?
I do have a question for Tom.
Yes.
So nine teachers giving up their prep time. Do we, are we semesters or trimesters?
Semesters.
Are they giving that up for the whole year or is it just first semester at this point?
Well, right now, it'll be the first semester because if we can hire, obviously, teachers for the second semester, that's what the plan would be.
Have we discussed compensating them accordingly?
It's in there.
Yeah, very good.
I'm done.
Perfect. Chris Young, school principal of Charlestown Primary School. I can't thank Cory enough. She's joining our Charlestown team. I'll let her introduce herself.
Hi all, I'm Cory LeClaire, and I have spent the last three years as superintendent for Cornish and Plainfield, and prior to that, I was in SAU six, which was Claremont and Unity as acting superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of federal programs and school improvement coordinator. I was in Claremont for about nine years. And so from the area, I literally live on the Charlestown-Caremont line, so not so far from either of the locations I'll be serving, and I don't officially start till Wednesday. So I don't have keys or a computer or anything like that quite yet. But everybody has been super welcoming, and I think Chris has taken on the lion's share of the responsibility for this position this summer. So thank you for getting us off the ground. And yeah, thanks for having me.
You made it, I guess, Charlestown. I think it comes down to hiring. This whole summer has been a process and a half with hiring. We were fortunate enough to find a music teacher. We have three positions. We were able to fill one in Charlestown that is gonna affect CPS, NCCS and Sarah Porter. We're still looking for one in Alstead, and then we still have a grant-funded position, but with, I think there are about twenty-six open positions for music within the state, so we lucked out getting one. Another thing, CMS, we are still looking for a sixth-grade language arts slash social studies teacher. We did collapse three classes into two. When you look at numbers, we did have one move in, so we're gonna have a total population in one class of twenty-one and twenty in the other. It is doable. You're still gonna keep it posted and hopefully find a good fit for that. But the teachers, even though it was last minute, accepted the, the news and we're moving forward. It'll be good. And it was sent out to the community, and again, only good conversations with parents, and they understand the situation we're in. And then along with a lot of hires previous to the summer, for a lot of moving, we had a lot of paraprofessionals. We actually interviewed today. We're interviewing tomorrow. We're getting there. Currently, right now, I know we still have one position open at CPS. We have three open positions at NCCS, and then we have two at CMS. But where we started the summer to now, we've made some gains. Another thing that happened this summer is the Charlestown site base met twice. We spent some time looking at the capital improvement plan and actually sent recommendations from that committee to the SAU office for review, and they'll probably make it to your seat at some point. But there was some good discussion and really brought together, where are we going the next couple of years? We're really looking at what was a five-year plan look like? And what do we need to do to make that successful? So that was where our, our focus has been. A lot of people have talked about start of school. I can only talk to CPS right this second. I can only talk to CPS right this second. But the first six weeks, we're gonna really focus in on expectations, routines, especially with the younger students. Everybody's looking forward to getting them back. We have pretty small classes. When you look at CPS, when I first started, we were at two sixty-five, we're down the two fifteen, two twenty range right now. But it's gonna be an amazing year. We're back to assemblies, which I'm super excited about having some fun again. Recognizing and sharing it with parents. We're gonna be looking at our traits. Each month we do character corner or CPS character corner. We're gonna continue with that. Fifth grade's gonna help with writing some of those. And we have some open houses planned. Some interesting things that I talked about with the secretaries the other day is just update an enrollment, which has been for a number of years, a lot of flux between Charlestown, a lot of schools seeing students coming and going up to a hundred in a year. This summer's been pretty slow. CPS, we had four students leave, ten new ones join us. CMS, we had five leave, three new join. And at NCCS, we only had two new joints. We do have a positive net gain. But we typically have a lot more influx, especially over the summer, which I find kind of curious for this time of year.
Look, interesting to see what happens as the fall starts.
I think there's gonna be some more.
Yeah. It's the campgrounds closed and those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I, not necessarily a question because I just contacted you during the day, but I think just for the board and for all of us to really consider what these guys have gone through as far as filling staff positions and to hear what the superintendent said about having some discussions on being creative, on how to get people to Fall Mountain to wanna be part of the team. Even though these guys are fantastic at what they do, they're still struggling. And in the long run, when they struggle, the students struggle. And we have to try to fix that as a board, as a community, as all five communities together. So at some point, I would like to see it put on the workshop where we can do a brainstorming session with possibly the principals, the superintendent, if he feels the principal should be a part of it, but definitely the superintendent and all of us together to try to figure out how to get more people and dice to come here. Because it's just, it's brutal. And I think our special ed has done phenomenal this year because I know the other districts around us are struggling ten times worse than we are. Same with the high schools, same with the smaller schools. So we've the staff here has been excellent, beyond excellent. And I'm not even sure where you're finding these people. I think Chris is just driving randomly up to houses and knocking on doors, but I think they need our help somehow, some way. And they deserve to have our help. So that's it. I think you guys have done incredible this year. So please don't leave. We're working on it. We'll get you some swag. Your superintendent will get you some swag.
We're big on swag. One of the things that I'm on the rescue squad for Acworth and one of the things that my chief for the EMT squad wanted me to make sure that I asked and I already talked with Brendan about this, but and I just wanted to just mention this to everybody. I know that you all are doing great and are moving forward in terms of making sure that the safety plans are all in place. And I'm hearing you talking about working with the police and with the fire departments and stuff. Please make sure that you continue to do that and that you have those good communication with and not for, not necessarily, I mean, obviously for when the shooter, if the shooter, not when, but if a shooter happens to come in. But if there was a tornado, I mean, there was, the high school had a situation where there was a tree that fell down across, across the the road. So, you know, it was a pretty big deal. So knocked out power, knocked out communication, knocked out a lot of stuff. So there's a lot of reasons for us to be able to have good communication with our families, good communication with our fire and rescue. All those folks, we're all, a lot of us are volunteer and you know, when our tone goes off, we go charging off. So we want to know where it is we're charging off to and what it is that we're going into. We have real, we have very structured situations for our structures, for structured structures, said, right? I guess for how it is that we're supposed to go into a situation that are very different than, than what goes on in a school. And so getting those two systems to talk to each other is a very important thing. Roundtable discussions is something that's a real good thing. And remember the small schools, you know, like you know, like the Acworth School, our fire department really wants to just sit down just with the, with the Acworth School and talk about with the teachers there and just talk about, you know, how do we make a plan? What do we do? Are we on the same, do we have the same radio frequencies? Do we know what frequencies we use? Those kinds of things, just so we can talk with each other. Just think, you know, think about that. So I'm off my bandwagon. Thank you. So. All right. And any other questions for, for these folks specifically?
I do, but I was gonna wait until Mary did the financial report.
Okay, all right. Yeah. I just, I wanted to just for the buildings and then Mary, you're on, financial report.
Don't have a lot for you. It's been a busy two months, just trying to get, I guess, our feet under us and get into some sort of rhythm and go through everything. We are currently going to have the auditor come to the next board meeting to talk about the fiscal year twenty-one audit. The twenty-two audit is coming up. Lori and the staff have been working very hard to get that all taken care of. You know, we're still working on some of our revenues and doing our journal entries and things of that nature to get in that position. I don't have a number for you yet for the end of the year. Hopefully at the next meeting I will, if not before that. Well, we've been working with the budget committee, which has been exciting and been very good. And hopefully, like I said, we're just trying to get some things done. Capital improvement plan, I know, is in everybody's minds and mine as well. So I said, we're just trying to prioritize. There's a lot of things going on right now that we're trying to get done. So in budget, it's coming up. So it's been a little crazy. But it's all good.
Other specific questions for Mary?
Yeah, no, my other questions is a general one for the superintendent and the staff, but just this one. I didn't see any attachment for, I think we're, are we approving expenditures tonight or not? We're not approving expenditures tonight.
There's a, there's a treasurer's report.
Oh, okay.
Why did you look at me?
Because it's under your
I got nothing. It's not.
There's a treasurer's report in front of you.
Oh.
Right there.
I'm sorry.
So did we, did we attach financial that go, that backs up? Okay. So maybe we could run that same timeframe and just send it out so that we have. Thank you. I just have one other general question and it segues off of Sarah's discussion about safety. I was curious because I know we used to do this here when I was here, work as an employee. And Andy was actually on the board then. So are we still doing the IC one hundred training with all of our staff? We are, yeah, through the safe schools portal? Okay, great. So it's nice, it would be, it's nice for the public to know that. Yeah. That all of our employees are being trained on, you know, how to handle emergency situations and responding accordingly, according to best practices. Great, that's awesome.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda and we all got Mr. Do you want to just explain this?
Yeah, I just, I think I touched base with everybody, but there's an updated personnel list in front of you. There were four people added after the last update was sent to you earlier today. So it's.
I make the motion to accept the consent agenda as.
Hang on a second. All right. On the favor. Any opposed? Moving right along. Many reports.
Just a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Do you want to do?
Oh.
No.
It's you're ahead of me. So sorry when I did my
We are following.
Thank you very much. Many reports, yes. Okay. So in discussion on, in creating the agenda, we thought that it would make sense for us to have a little bit, the new, the new committee is the I can't say the word.
Strategic plan.
Thank you. Teaching planning committee. And so we thought, having some discussion about the and the purpose of the committee and getting some, some direction for that committee would make some some sense. So
I think we talked about it at the workshop, but we didn't really talk about exactly what the committee was gonna be doing. And I know that, I know that Alyssa and Shelley offered to be on the committee, but I think there just needs to be a more broad discussion about the timing, what the timeline of that committee, what they're gonna be doing and how, who else might sit on that committee.
This, this committee warped into this because that's not what I signed up for. When, remember when we did, remember last summer when we did all the planning stuff in the committees? Remember, remember we did that? One of them was not strategic planning, but it was community relations and like community relations and communication. And then somehow it was, well, that's what the strategic planning committee does and then it warped into that. I have no problems being on the strategic planning committee. But I would also like some vision on what exactly we're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So some of the areas, and Jamie can probably try them too. But yeah, you, you want to consider what you want it to do for you, I think, you know, do you want it to be your guidepost, for example, for the next five years? Then you have to also make a decision. Do you want to run the committee yourself or the process yourself, or do you want to bring in an outside group to help facilitate the process? Then you need to decide, well, you know, if this is kind of the goal of the strategic plan vision, then who do we need to be talking to about that? So there's, when we were looking at it after, we were like, yeah, we weren't talking about the same thing because this is really big. And it's normally like a year-long, maybe more process. And you know, you really do have to consider, are you gonna embrace it? Are you gonna use it? Because it's not cheap, either in, sometimes in money, but definitely in time. And if you're just gonna create one because that's what you were told to do and not going to use it as sort of the foundation that you go back to, then you might want to do something different. And so that's the discussion you may want to have.
In correlation to my world, this planning committee is sort of like a master plan for the town.
Correct.
But it's a master plan for the, for the school.
Yeah.
For the school district, right. And what I have, what I've had strategic plan that this process do before is when I was working in Springfield, we were pretty, we were pretty dysfunctional and kind of all over the place. And so I was working under, under Dr. Parati at the time. And what he used the strategic planning process for was to really reach out to all members of the committee, of the community, to the, to the business people, to the homeowners, to the elderly taxpayers who didn't want to pay taxes, to the, to the young people who had children just starting in school, to everybody. So he had all, you know, really really reaching out to everyone and brought brought everybody together for oodles of, talk about time, oodles of meetings to plan, what is it that we want Springfield to do? And to be, because it used to be like a place that everybody wanted to teach in and everybody wanted to come to, kind of like Claremont was and a lot of these areas were.
What I'm on is.
Then, you know, started to, things started moving in a different direction. So, so it really brought people together to think about what is it that we want to do and where do we want this district to go? And moving us into the net, into this current century of learning. And we talked a lot about, about what do we do to our, with our buildings, you know, what do we have to do with our buildings to bring them up to be able to do what was so we, twentieth century schools, right?
Yes, I don't want to interrupt him. So strategic planning, usually you do it and we, we've done it here at Fall Mountain. So I'm curious where all that went. And if it got lost because, right, because we did vision of a graduate and did the whole strategic plan, right? In twenty fifteen. Okay. So it sounds as if we have a foundation, we just haven't updated that foundation. Okay. And I left shortly thereafter. So usually it's done in four towers, if you will. And usually there's a curriculum tower, there's a facilities tower, there's a legislative tower. There's usually a finance and or governance tower. They sometimes put those two together. I, we've just completed this at my district up north. So it was a blast, not really. It's a lot of work to Shelley's point and everybody's point. So I think it would be important for us if we need to update that to resurrect what we have in place. Maybe review it over the next two or three months and then put that on a future workshop discussion, maybe around November or so, so that we can see what parts of it maybe we need to update.
Well, yeah, what we had looked at is it's actually at the, at the workshop, what we had done was we had put it on to the
Weddings, apparently I missed everything.
We had put on, we had put on discussing the, the strategic plan onto, onto the workshop in the spring. And so what we were, what we, the, us that were putting together the agenda for, for tonight talked about was, was that one of the things that the, that the committee would work on doing that is kind of organ, not, not looking at that they, there would be anything of like presenting to the community, the strategic plan
Right.
from there. Because really our focus this year is like, we have, we already have a lot of focuses for this year. We have the master the articles of agreement. We have, you know, so that there's, there are things that, there's things that we have to take care of. And so it would be a matter of looking at what, how are we gonna do this? Because that, you know, what's, what's, what is it that we're gonna be working on? And so that would be kind of you know, researching what, what was done in two thousand and fifteen. That was, that was a while ago now. And so where, what needs to be relooked at and how do we want to go about doing that? Do we want to bring in an outside agency to help us, help us to do that? Do we want to do it ourselves? What would be the pros and the cons of doing all of that and, and then presenting that at a workshop in the spring? Yes.
When I left the school board, we were at the tail end of creating the last strategic plan. It was a expensive process. We hired a facilitator, we fired a facilitator, we hired another facilitator. It was an over a two-year process and it involved the entire board. And I would highly recommend that you scrap this this year. I agree with Jamie and you and Brendan that we should review what we have and, you know, talk about it as a board. The retreat would have been a nice spot to do that. But I, our plate is full. From the limited things that I've heard, we don't need this.
I, I
Shelley doesn't need it either.
I, actually, actually, I have more. I actually, actually, I have more than enough time, but, and if that is something that the district. Or this board or the communities needed or wanted, I am sure that there are more than the people behind me to get it done. However, I don't believe there have been any conversations about scrapping the current strategic plan. And starting over, there have been, I have not ever heard that. If you only did it in 2015, you probably need a little bit of updates because we did go through the withdrawal and there has been a little. Bump in some things and might need some tweaking and I'm sure Alyssa would. Be great at looking over every single word in that document. But I don't have a problem looking at the strategic plan and I know Alyssa doesn't. And we could make notes or we could get together with people and make notes, but I just want to be clear, I have no intentions of scrapping. Anything and I didn't think that was at all what this.
I didn't say scrap strategic plan.
What it was.
Suggested scratching the committee for this year.
The task, just delaying the task. That was Andy's way to say delay the task right now until we get to a point where.
And bring it back to the workshop in April that we had originally put on the calendar.
So just come to the workshop in, in April.
Could we get the, could we get the one that's sent to all of us? Because if it's not posted.
Yeah, I would, I would have every, make sure that every single one of us have a copy of that and that, along with our little board book. That I think Joe brought.
Yeah, there's, there's more.
Yeah, so.
Yes, I just had a suggestion that for this strategic planning committee, I, I agree that it's too big a project to do from. Something to start the whole year, do some of the other things. But when I was thinking about it, I was, I had just vision of a steering committee where Shelley and myself and whoever else. Actually take what we have currently and really go through it and then make that presentation to the rest of the board at our workshop in the spring, so that we have a jumping off point.
That's what I was thinking was that a small group would just take a look at it and look thoroughly at it and then have a jump. It'd just be able to say, okay, this is what we have and this might be what we, this may be, these are some options of what we might do next.
Right, I don't, I really don't want to show up at a workshop and start from zero.
And right, that's what I was looking at was instead of us starting at zero, okay, so now what do we do? Starting with, okay, this is what we have, these are, these are, this is option A, this is option B, this is option C of what we could do next, you know? So, but that, that was all I was thinking of. It's, but it's fine.
Yeah, I think that was the initial intent, intent of putting this committee together was to do exactly what Alyssa's recommending. I just think we need to, my, my point was that we need to have a broader discussion as what that committee actually looks like. Right, because I don't think just two board members is what the intent is.
Right.
So I mean, to get that part.
Yes, ma'am. Your turn.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think you need to have, you need to have folks from elementary, folks from middle school, folks from high school. Don't, you don't need to have one from every single school, but I think they need to have access to discuss with them when they get to those portions. Because the strategic plan was built with.
Right, but remember that, that this is not, this is not building a new, this is just looking at what we have, just reviewing what we have.
I understand that, but how are two board members going to know what's changed in seven years? When they're not, they don't work in this realm. Without some guidance from folks who do.
I just wanted to be on a community outreach committee.
You could do that.
I just wanted to be like, you know, the pom poms to each committee, community and bring everybody together and have potlucks, that's what I was.
Why don't we send it out to everyone so that you at least have it?
Okay.
And then, I mean, there are many ways to sort of get to. The point where whoever's on the board committee would be available to present in a way that was, you know. Full of information, knowledgeable and has input from the respective folks, but at least you can look at it first. That was what we've done this day.
We put this on hold until April, there'll be new committee members because member election is in March.
Are you leaving?
I didn't. Just checking. There's a lot of people. Decided to do it after the election.
All right, so we're going to basically kind of table it for right now.
Yes, I'm going to send the board the document to review and then. Talk about it again. I can put it on next agenda if you'd like. And you can decide how you want that, what you want that steering committee to look like.
Okay, all right, so we will table that.
But we should look, as we're reviewing it, we should keep in mind these four questions, basically, right? And bring our opinions, whether they're popular or not, so that we can discuss them, okay? And we're going to do that prior to April, okay?
All right, so that's tabled for the moment. All right, treasures report.
Yeah, I accept. I make a motion to accept the treasures.
Does it have a total dollar amount? It should probably be in the motion.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's a lot of paper.
It's over the summer and then I'd like to talk about process.
Yeah, yes.
I think we hadn't decided process.
Question, total budgets are $4,618,978 and $56.
Thank you, to be in the motion. Did somebody second it?
I seconded.
Okay. Um, do, I think there might be some discussion then, so just that we haven't.
Discussion about process because we discussed it in. No, you're fine. We discussed it in June about changing the process, but we, we decided to wait until everybody could get on board and their feet wet.
None of us were here.
Right, right, right. Well, I think Mary's aware of, because I think it was brought back and discussed, but she hasn't had time. To work through all the, you know, the logistics of it.
For this report, does Andy sign where Craig the crew was?
Not unless he was seated for when the expenses are made.
No, we just skip over.
Yeah.
Okay.
A writing.
So, so can we discuss the process?
Yeah, I would like.
Quickly.
We'll discuss the process before we, before we accept it, correct? Or.
I think you have to accept this.
Let's, all in favor of accepting the treasure, treasure report, say aye. Anyone opposed?
I'm going to oppose because I haven't seen a report on it. So.
I'm not comfortable accepting it without having one pass it. Do we want to? Do the motion to accept it and talk to you if you have an objection, or you're just not, because you didn't see it ahead of time?
I, we didn't have a financial report that came out, it usually comes out with that. It shows the total dollar amounts of what's gone on in all the different line items. So to sit here for an hour and go through those, I'm sorry, I'm, and, and there's nothing against Mary and she knows that. You know, she, she knows, she sat here as a chair before, you know, or as a board member. So that's part of my question on process, right? Is that we would be able to do that, and it's not that I'm saying anybody's doing anything wrong. I totally know you're very competent and capable and follow all the rules. It's just we, when we sign that, we're saying we reviewed it, right?
Yeah, trying to get clarity for the minutes.
Yeah.
What we were opposing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Carrie.
Yeah, right, so. So. So.
Still discussing.
Right, so we have. I think that we have.
Typically in the minutes, I note who's opposed the motion, so I'm just looking to get clarity on who is not in favor of accepting the report.
So I just do. Okay, so we have two, two people who, who have basically opposed.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then there was a request for some discussion on process. And so that seems to be what we were starting to move into without finishing our, finishing the. Official book, so. My understanding was that there was going to be. That there was going to start to be a, an overall, well, there were two things that we had talked about possibly doing. One was that, that there was going to be a group of people who were going to sit, who were going to go in and sit down with, with. There was no BA at the time, but sit down with the BA and now you review. Who is now Mary. So would sit down with Mary and go over the financial report and then be able, so that there would, there would be some kind of a concept of what the financial report was. And then the other poss, the other concept was that there would be discussion of what. What the, kind of an overview of what all of these papers are and so that we kind of have an idea of what it is that we're signing. And. Which I've never had in, in the whole time that I've been on the board and I've never, I've never seen, I've always seen. In all the boards, school boards that I, that I have been at and I've been doing this for a couple of years. I've always seen these go around and I've never seen people really completely understand what it is that they're signing and people just sign them, so. I don't, I don't know how to make that be more clear, so without having time, like having time ahead of time to go through that and look at them, so.
So, may I speak? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I thought that's what we had discussed earlier this year, was that one member would be determined to be the person who would receive this ahead of time.
One or two.
One or two. And literally have it not during a discussion to look at it and absorb, but to have time to look at it and then come back and acknowledge it. And then everybody would be able to sign it.
I think we, and I also believe, sorry Jamie, I also believe the discussion was, we would possibly implement that once. Mary got on board and she kind of got settled in, so I can see it not happening this month or maybe even. Next month because it's the start of school, but I think that was the conversation that, you know, once Mary got comfortable, set, settled in. So.
I just wanted to explain what the process actually was that I brought forward, because that's not exactly what it is, okay? And so, and why? So, and that it's approvable by auditing standards. So, as board members, we are charged with reviewing financials, right, and signing off. That's why we're signing all these things. So, in an effort to make it easier, so for everybody who's here, who wants to review it. You don't have to review it. If you don't want to, don't sign it. I don't care. Um, but if you want to review it ahead of time and not have to spend an hour not paying attention to everything else that's going on or sit here an hour later. Because I used to be on the very end, which I'm going to be tonight, and review it because that's my job and I have a certification that. You know, I review things before I have to sign them. So what, what I had suggested is that the reports that they print out, that you're looking at, that's the backup documentation. Would, as you're doing the accounts payable runs and the payroll runs, would be emailed out to your school board members. Every quarter, two members are assigned to review that every single time it comes out. So that the folks who are assigned to review it, then email back in the same week by Wednesday or Thursday, depending on when you send checks out. To say, I have reviewed it and approved. And then it's sent, so that when it gets to this point, it's already been approved by at least two, two people on the board. And then the other board members will have also had the opportunity to look at it if they have time and choose to do so. Ahead of putting their signature on the documents. The documents wouldn't be any different than what you're, than what you're sending here. So then, you know, you can bring the packet, but basically instead of signing every single sheet, you have one overview sheet. Has all the totals for each fund, the range of dates, and you sign one top sheet one time for whatever's in the packet. It's much quicker, much more efficient. It's a process that's been vetted by at least Plodgic and Sanderson, and I'm pretty sure Tim Green. So that was my suggestion.
I'm going to say, Jamie, it happens, it's happened in the past two districts I've been in. Where we've had two board members sign ahead of time. And then it would go to the full board. I haven't done the, where everything goes into one, one page and sign off on one page. I still had everybody sign off on each individual voucher that is there. I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I, I think it's fine to send it out to people for review. Because when we print the report, it's PDF. That, that I don't have an issue with and I do. I mean, if you look at the law, it says you guys are supposed to approve before we pay. Payroll, little bit of an exception because it has to go because it's already a contracted amount. That could be said for a few other portions of payables such as our note, you know, our bond and things like that. But I do agree with Jamie that, that is something, a process that needs to be done and the auditors. It might, it needs to be done.
Good question that.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Can I just ask if the two of you can work out whatever that looks like?
Yeah. Yeah, we've just not been able to connect because, you know, it's been crazy.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I reached out and said to Mary, I'm happy to show you exactly what I give to my four different boards. It makes it quick, easy peasy and what we send out that, that makes it enough information that you can look at it and review it easily. And not too much information that you're overwhelmed.
Well, and that's where I'd like to go over you about the financial report. Yes, please, if we can connect, that would be great.
Because I think we already, I think as a board, we already agreed.
That was a good idea.
Jamie and I will get together and put that together.
All right. Before the next meeting.
Works for me.
Friday afternoon.
Works for me.
All right, good, so then we will know what we're doing for the next, for maybe the next time, not for the next time, then next time.
But we gotta pick two people that have to be responsible for that.
Oh, my goodness. Do we have?
To be one of those two people for the first, first person in the.
Oh, that's right.
First three months.
I'll volunteer again. One of the two people that does that.
We have a non-public?
We do.
We do?
I make a motion, no. We have to adjourn, right? So I make a motion going non-public.
Could, I have one other.
Yes.
It'll be brief, I promise. So, in, during our board workshop, we discussed the revolving board meetings throughout the district.
Oh, yeah.
And getting back to that model and talking to IT, there are some concerns about connectivity and being able to broadcast. And so I would like to ask the board to consider maybe picking, we can pick for, like.
But couldn't we just tape instead of live broadcast, just tape it and then post it later?
So I'm going to defer to.
You can tape it with the, you can tape it with the owl and then post it later.
Not the live broadcaster, it's the logistics of the physical recording versus live streaming is a difference.
So you said pick for what?
So I was going to suggest that maybe this school year, we could just do for like primary locations, meaning like Wapo. You know, we do one at Wapo Elementary School, one at Charlestown Middle School, like some of our bigger schools. And just making sure we're hitting each of the, you know, attendance areas and maybe start that way and then kind of, you know, see, see how that goes. And kind of take a little bit of the pressure off of IT if the board.
I'm good with that.
I'll agree to that.
Yeah, I think, I think it makes sense to use the larger areas anyway.
Yeah. So, I find, you know, four meetings to, to do that with and keep you posted.
That sounds good. So do I hear a motion to go into them? Well, we need, I do have to read that thing.
You don't have to read the whole thing, just.
I have the three, the 91A, colon, three, two. Yeah, A, C, and K are the three. I have them right on the agenda.
So we'll make a motion to go into non-public for New Hampshire RSA 91 dash A, colon, three, two, A, B, C, and K.
We made the, we made the motion.
Okay.
Good night.
I need a roll call.
Be with all of you.